We don't have to start this minute, but it takes a minute or two for the YouTube thing to get fired up, so.
Well, give me a signal.
From here on out, we're being recorded.
Give me a signal. Give me some kind of sign.
Okay, well, my clock shows two minutes, but.
Me too.
I know, by the way, tonight is the end of daylight savings time for.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Right, that's right. Ah, good reminder. Thank you. I've been losing track of my days and, you know, it's been, so. Need those reminders. Thank you so much.
It was an extra hour to stay at the Halloween parties.
That's right. Okay, I'm blanking my screen.
Okay. Once I am my opening statement and turn it over to you, Sarah, I'm out of the screen, okay?
Okay, ready?
Okay. Welcome to the Sassoon City Candidate Forum. I will be your host this morning. My name is Anita Robertson and I am the forum coordinator. Today, we have the city council candidates who are here to present their views for Sassoon's future. Before we begin, I would like to tell you a little some, a little bit about the League of Women Voters and our, and our statement, mission statement. The League of Women Voters Salado County is a chapter of the League of Women Voters California and the National League of Women Voters. The League does not support nor oppose any political party or candidate. The purpose of these candidate forums is to allow voters an opportunity to hear candidates respond to questions from their constituents about the issues facing their community. All verified candidates have been invited to participate. In a minute, our moderator will outline the format and rules for this event. I'd like to introduce our team, who have worked to make this forum happen, beginning with our moderator, Sarah Chapman, our chat manager, Julie Hartford, our timekeeper, Judy Potter, and our technician, Niles Meters. This candidate forum is being held as a Zoom meeting. Additionally, it is being broadcasted live on YouTube and recorded. If you are on YouTube live right now, thank you for joining us. And please feel free to put questions for the candidates into the YouTube chat box. Questions submitted during the forum will be screened and sorted for appropriateness and relevance. Similar questions may be consolidated. Questions of a personal or inflammatory nature will be discarded. You should be aware, if you are on YouTube watching this, the candidates cannot see you or your comments. For those on Zoom side, if you have a YouTube window open, please ensure that its speaker is muted. Otherwise, you'll have an echo that will interfere with our audio clarity. If you have feedback or suggestions for the League of Women Voters of Salado County regarding any of our candidate forums, we encourage you to email us. You can find our email address on our website along with other valuable information. The views expressed this morning by the candidates are theirs and not the views of the League of Women Voters. The recording of this forum will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Salado County's YouTube channel. Additionally, there will be links to our recorded forum on our website. The copyright for this forum belongs to the League of Women Voters of Salado County, which reserve all rights to recording of this forum. No portion of the contents of this forum may be reproduced or otherwise used without the prior written consent from the League of Women Voters. No portion of this recording may be used to promote one candidate or to oppose another in any way. Additionally, no portion of this forum may be used to imply that the League of Women Voters endorses any candidate. If you, if the recording of this forum is to be used, it must be used in its entirety. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to thank the candidates for taking the time to be here this morning. And I would encourage the audience to reach out to them if you have more questions. Running for office is difficult and they deserve all our appreciation for their willingness to run and to serve their community by being elected officials. Virtual events like this takes a lot of planning and a number of people behind the scenes. We thank them for their hard work. Thank you to the audience and the league members who have submitted questions for this forum. I would like to thank them all. It takes a village. The League of Women Voters of Salado County has a policy that the moderator should not be a constituent of the candidates who are speaking at this forum. Our moderator, Sarah Chapman, is a Va- is a Vacaville, sorry, resident and a member of the League. She has been gracious enough to be our moderator for this event. So let's get started. Thank you for watching. It's now over to Sarah.
Mrs. Haines. Good morning. My name is stated. It's Dr. Sarah Chapman, and I will be your moderator for this forum, which has been stated, it's being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Salado County. I'd like to welcome you, our YouTube audience, and the Sassoon City, uh, city council candidates who are with us this morning. Anthony Adams, Thomas Alder, Alma Hernandez, and Michael Hudson. All are verified candidates, or all verified candidates are in attendance. We, we all appreciate their taking the time to appear on this forum. This event is a forum, not a debate. The difference is that in a forum, each candidate will be asked the same questions. They will not speak to each other, but rather they will speak to you, the audience. We have asked the candidates not to refer to one another, and we ask they not mention endorsements or any particular affiliations, but to focus on what they will bring to the position of city council member. The candidates would be given two minutes for their opening statements and one and a half minutes to answer the questions. The order in which the candidates will make their opening statements has been decided by the League. Following their opening statements, the candidates would be given the questions in an alternating order, so we could be doing a round robin. To the viewing audience, in the event you should have a question you wish to be asked of the candidates, you are permitted to submit your questions via the YouTube chat. We may not get to all questions due to time constraints. Questions that are of general interest that are not asked will be forwarded to the candidates at the conclusion of the forum, and their responses will be posted on the League's website. Initial questions were developed by the League based on input from membership, from the League members, and others were submitted to us from within the community. At conclusion of the question and answer section, the candidates will make two-minute closing statements. With as they give you, the audience, a way to contact if you have further questions. So at this time, we will begin with the opening statements and the candidate to begin the opening statements is Mr. Alder, Thomas Alder.
Am I ready to go on? Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, and ladies, thank you for putting on this forum and Lyles, you for the technical part of it. My name is Dr. Tom Alder, and I'm a happy resident of Sassoon City and have been for over fifty years. I love this city. I have watched it grow. I've been very much a part of it for over fifty years. When I first came to Sassoon in the nineteen sixties after getting out of the, the military, the army, military police, I joined the police department in Sassoon. At that time, we had eighteen hundred people in the city, which incidentally, when I left in nineteen ninety-three, twenty-five plus years later, as the chief for many of those years, um, the population was around twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, which it's not that much more now. Uh, I, I come to Sassoon, I, I come for this position because I love my community. And I do not like to see what is happening with the financial portion of it. We're in, in debt, maybe to a point of coming up with bankruptcy. We're dealing with issues of COVID, we're dealing with, um, issues of homelessness. We, we have some serious issues going on in the city which need to be addressed and cannot be just letting go at this time. I come with experience. Um, I, I come with thirty-eight years of experience in law enforcement, the majority of it being with Sassoon and the police department as the chief. I come with a leadership, a planning, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the next individual to speak is Mr. Anthony Adams.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I'd love to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on, my fellow candidates for taking the time, and also members of the public who are taking their Saturday morning to listen to this. Um, so my name is Anthony Adams. Uh, I am running for Sassoon City Council. I am actually the current incumbent for Sassoon City Council. I was appointed in twenty nineteen after an open and competitive town hall process. So how did I get to Sassoon City? I've been here for about seven years. Um, I live here, I work here, and I love Sassoon City. I've, uh, lived in lots of cities. Um, originally from southwest Louisiana, Lake Trails, Louisiana. If you guys have heard of Hurricane Laura, that was the one that was, uh, the city that was destroyed by that. I was there just recently to help and do some cleanup, actually. And, um, you know, I moved here when I was thirteen. I noticed that, uh, you know, people took care of their front lawns. There was trees, um, there was transit, and there was just a higher bar, uh, higher bar of success here, and I knew it was something that I wanted to be a part of. So I moved out on my own when I was eighteen years old. I've, uh, worked ever since, put myself through college, um, LA, some smaller cities as well. And, um, you know, getting through college, I always wanted to solve problems. Uh, I grew up very poor and I, I knew that I wanted to be one that wanted to, um, help solve some societal issues. So I have a double masters from Cal Poly, one in city and regional planning, one in engineering. I currently work for the Salado Transportation Authority as a project manager where I deliver multimillion dollar projects. And I realized through that job and through my life that partnerships are the key, the keys to success. Sassoon City has a myriad of issues, as has been mentioned previously and will be mentioned again. And I want everyone listening today to focus on the answers and solutions that the candidates propose to these problems. These problems are not unique to Sassoon City, and we will make sure that we can solve them on a, um, a comprehensive basis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And the next person to speak is Alma Hernandez.
Good morning, everyone. I'm so excited to be here, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for, um, setting up this platform for us today. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Uh, and just thank you for creating this platform for us to be able to connect with community and share a little bit about ourselves. Uh, once again, my name is Alma Hernandez. I grew up here in Sassoon City. I moved here when I was seven years old. I, um, went to Crescent Elementary School and Sassoon Elementary here, uh, school here locally, and I am a product of someone of, of a student here from our local dis- school districts, um, and have been mentored to become the type of leader who carries integrity, who carries values at the forefront of just how I interact with people and community on a regular basis, and I'm so thankful for community members who have helped raise me too. Um, one of the things that I value so much and why I'm running for Sassoon City is because I've been out there in community volunteering regularly, from our homelessness issues to issues around our small businesses, to issues around how do we create funding and revenue streams for our community, as well as just listening to people and their needs, you know, the, the, what they're hurting about, like the cleanliness or the trash or the issues around, um, roads or jobs or, or what, what's going on in this moment. And that is what is my current driving force. What had inspired me was listening to those voices. What continues to help me push through, um, everything that I, that I want to be able to bring forth to our community is because when we keep people at the forefront and keep their needs at the forefront, it's what continues to help us identify what our priorities are as a city, what kind of resources we need to bring forth and how we're going to make that happen. And I believe I am a qualified candidate to be able to bring forth skills that will help bring, um, our Sassoon City forward and upward. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to remind, um, the candidates, if you have more than one device on, it interferes with the audio. So if you have your, um, an iPad, telephone sitting next on and sitting next to your device that you're, uh, presenting, please shut it off at this time. Okay, all right. Now we have, we're, we've completed the opening statement, and now we get to the fun part of the forum. We will, the first person to speak will be Mr. Adams.
I believe we're missing.
I think, uh, Sarah.
Pardon me. Do I get an opening statement?
Please. Uh, and I apologize, uh, Mr. Hudson. So let me recoup, and I'm gonna continue with the opening statements, please. Uh, Mr. Hudson, forgive me for the, for my oversight. It wasn't intentional. So at this time, we'll have the opening statement by Mike Hudson.
Thank you so much. Uh, I want to thank, take time to thank, uh, uh, the League of Women Voters of Salado County. What a great job they've done, uh, prepared all the way through. They did a rehearsal. I know there's background that are doing a lot of great things. I really, really appreciate the service of the community, unbiased. Great. Anyway, thank, uh, I'm Mike Hudson, and, uh, I'm running for Sassoon City. Been a council member in the past, and hope to be a member again. This like, I have a solid record of action. And I've worked, uh, I was, uh, I've been a former vice mayor, uh, the former president of the waterfront district, been a board for several different nonprofits.
I think we're getting a lot of, uh, breakup on Mr. Hudson's audio.
Okay, Mr. Hudson, by chance, can you check and make sure you do not have a second device open?
No, it's off. We're out. Here. How's that?
Uh, we're, you, you're breaking up terribly, so, um.
Another option possibly is for Mr. Hudson to call in. I do know if you call in, there's better audio quality.
Anyway, can I continue? You're being?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great.
Well, hold on one second, please. Will you reset the clock to one minute?
I, I don't.
Just a second, okay? There we go. Okay, thank you. Continue, Mr. Hudson.
Anyway, I, I've, uh, had experience, I've been a vice, I've been for, uh, for city, for.
And we want to give you equal quality time, and you're, you're, you continue to, um, break up. So if possible, could you call in? And at that time, I'm gonna continue with the forum. However, I will give you ample time. Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to the first question of, of the forum, and Mr. Adams, you will begin. What are the top three issues facing Sassoon City?
Um, thank you, Dr. Chapman. So, uh, the top three issues, um, actually kind of all stemmed from one issue, and that's lack of revenue, um, in the city. And because we don't have the revenue that we need in the city, our public safety is suffering, uh, the quality of our infrastructure is suffering, and also we have quite a bad homelessness issue in our city as well. I just want to start with the crux of this, and that is the revenue issue. So Sassoon City has a budget of about sixteen million dollars. Our population is about thirty thousand people. But seeing the perspective, uh, Dixon has a budget of twenty-two million dollars, and their population is two-thirds of ours. Benicia has the same size of population, yet their budget is thirty million dollars, about twice the size of ours. So Sassoon City has to grow our revenue if we are going to improve the public safety, deal with homelessness issues, and also start to work on some of the infrastructure issues that we have in the city. So how do we solve this? We have to grow. Um, Sassoon City has something that not many other cities have, and that's open space in prime locations. Right behind the water tower is a thirty-acre site. You will not see a site like that in Fairfield. You're not gonna see a site like that in Vacaville, because they've already developed it. So what we have to do is we have to plan for, we have to get some partnerships, we have to get some outside investment, and we have to build quality development. It's gonna bring outside investment into Sassoon City, grow our tax base, grow some businesses, improve the revenue that we have, so we can start tackling these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person, it's Alma Hernandez. The question, what are the top three issues facing Sassoon?
Um, I believe the top three issues are a structural deficit, which means that we continuously have expenses that over, um, that are over our revenues. We do not have enough of a revenue structure in place. So economic development tends to be the second, like, part of that conversation that is also a top priority. And out of that stems issues of not being able to fund our public safety correctly, not be able to fund, um, for our public works to help clean our streets, to not be able to fund enough of, um, e- even, we, we actually don't even have an economic development, uh, position currently funded. It's actually, we deferred funding for that so that we could, um, save almost a hundred ninety thousand dollars this year, and that is hurting us. So we're not having someone who's currently looking for dedicated time of bringing in some of those revenue structures, so, but, um, developing mindfully is important. And out of that is being able to address the other concerns such as homelessness, which is another contributing factor that is continuously, uh, increasing at an alarming rate. And we do not even have a nonprofit or, or funding or dedicated, um, organizations in Sassoon City specifically to address this primary concern. Um, so between structural deficit, economic development, homelessness, all of that, um, is a top priority for me, and it's one of the things that I want to make sure contingency is addressed, um, at, at a continuous basis and bring it up forth as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Alder, the question, what are the top three issues facing Sassoon City?
Number one is the deficit. Um, we are currently in a deficit of three to five million dollars. Two years ago, before our current mayor took office, we had a reserve fund of over two and a half million dollars. Like I said, we are now in a heavy, heavy, several million dollar deficit, and that has been because of, of overspending. That, that been many things that have been taken on by the mayor that, um, we did not have the funds for it, like in the case of the fire, which is a several million dollar thing that she took on. We did not have monies coming in to take care of that project. That's, that's one. And number two is, is in order to take care of that project, she has went ahead and taken away seven positions from the police department, which has bad minimum staffing and leaves this city, uh, under public safety problems. Uh, we, we do have problems with, with the COVID nineteen, and we have homeless problems which have to be addressed. And we need to get heavily into that budget and, uh, see what we can do to get revenues in. And I've been on, on structural planning of this city for over thirty years. And there are ways that we can come back around, but we'll have to dig in, dig hard, and stop spending uh, at the current rate we're spending, otherwise Sassoon is in, in tune for a bankruptcy.
Excuse me, Mr. Alder, time is up.
We may have, uh, Mr. Hudson back via cell phone. Let's see if he can unmute and speak.
All right. Will you set the clock, I'm sorry, for one minute, please?
Excuse me.
Working on it. Okay. One for one minute. There you go. Okay, Mr. Hudson.
Hold on, I'm trying to, there's, there's, there's a cell phone. He's logged in on his cell phone, but I haven't heard, actually been able to.
Hello, hello.
No, okay.
I am here.
All right, good. Um, over to you, Sarah.
I thought it was unmuted, but I, I have to push a, a certain combination here. Okay, so what are we doing?
Mr. Hudson, you will have one minute to complete your opening statement.
Okay, we'll take another try at it. Good deal. Uh, hi, I'm Mike Hudson. Uh, I want to first of all thank the League of Women Voters of Salado County for putting on this forum, and, uh, what a terrific job they've done. Uh, I'm very pleased to, to participate. I'm Mike Hudson. I have a, I've been a city councilman in the past, uh, a vice mayor. I've been the president of Business Improvement District. I've sat the board of several different homeless nonprofits. I've been somebody in charge of various ministries of churches, and, uh, I've also been, I'm a veteran, uh, United States Navy Submarine Service veteran. I currently work for the state of California as an internet security contractor. I got, I have a vision for Sassoon City, and that's to restore the financial, uh, integrity of the city, to reduce crime, and to make families and neighborhoods safe, to improve our streets and schools and parks. Thank you for, for, uh, giving me this opportunity.
Mr. Hudson, I'm, uh, the other candidates have completed, uh, answering the first question, and I will now ask the question of you. What are the top three issues facing Sassoon City? You have a minute and a half.
Terrific. Uh, you know, Sassoon City has gone through an awful lot. Uh, we used to be a boom town from the gold rush and, and we did pretty well until I- eighty bypassed us, and then we've become kind of a backwater and a bedroom community. Our top three issues in Sassoon City are, uh, pretty easy to identify. The top priority, my top priority, is first of all, the safety and security of all Sassoon City residents. That means safe parks, safe neighborhoods, safe streets. Uh, that means expeditiously dealing, expeditiously and compassionately dealing with homeless threats, well-managed public health hazards, training, a trained and staffed, well-staffed police department, before and after-school programs and diversion programs for our youth. before and after school programs and diversion programs for our youth and protection of our most vulnerable seniors. We want to recognize the beauty and the diversity of all residents and I think these are right at the top of the list of things that need to be done. More importantly, well, not more importantly, but there's some other side issues, of course. The budget deficit is huge and we have a fifteen million dollar budget generally and a five million dollar deficit. That's huge. That's unsustainable and we need to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to question two and the first candidate to speak will be Alma Hernandez. How will you help the city resolve problems with crime and policing?
Thank you so much. That's a really great question because community safety is definitely a priority. Most recently, I've been working with some of the small businesses downtown and things that I've learned is, one, we've had businesses that have left because they have felt unsafe in our downtown area. And we have current businesses that are afraid people will not come and purchase anything because they can't, it's dirty, it's unclean and they there's issues with crime as well. We've heard about crime response rates and feel people feeling a little frustrated when they're when they're calling and someone doesn't respond right away. And it has to do more because because we do not, we're not properly staffed. We currently have twenty four positions that we're trying to staff right now and I think we have to continuously recruit diverse police officers that will come and help and bring forth their best skills to support our community. But more than that, we need to keep our officers here. We need to sustain them too with a competitive salary that keeps them here so that our turnover rate isn't two years, that our turnover rate isn't that small of a timeframe. We want police officers who are here, who are building relationships with our community members, who are understanding the pockets of the community that need their needs the most or high traffic areas of crime, who we have investigative support to be able to actually take to court and finalize issues that need to be taken off the street. And so those are all things that need to be encompassed in regards to being able to keep our community safe and sustainable for our departments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, the question, how will you help the city resolve problems with crime and policing?
First and foremost, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, great. First and foremost, the police department is suffering the lowest levels of staffing they've had since the mid nineties. Post standards say that we should have at least one police officer per thousand people. We have twenty eight thousand people in our city at least, almost twenty nine thousand. We should have twenty nine officers, sworn officers. We don't. We have we have according to the budget, twenty four. You talk to a police officer though, they'll tell you there's only eighteen active police officers currently. We're supposed to have three community service officers. We have one. That's not acceptable. That means that we have problems in many different areas. Not only is our crime currently spiking and it it has to do with the current council and the people that are sitting on the current council. They have to make it a priority for crime and safety. They have to make it a priority for code enforcement and going out there and and helping our neighborhoods. One neighbor should not be able to steal the property value of another neighbor by having a junked car in their front yard. These are huge issues. All right. There's huge issues when it comes to shootings. We just had a shooting on Timtail and Sunset the other day. Nobody was shot, but there's a gun fired in the middle of our city in the middle of the day. That's not acceptable. We have. Thank you very much.
The next person, Mr. Alder. Please unmute. Mr. Alder, please unmute, unmute, unmute. Now, can you unmute him?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute him. He just hopefully we'll see, give him a chance. He just blocked his video. There's a video. There we go. All right, you should be good.
Yes, you know, this high tech stuff, you know.
We know.
Crime, crime and policing has been my, one of my babies for almost four decades. I've been in law enforcement, I've been in the military police and I've been the chief of police here in Sisoon. I started the department in the sixties and planned led the leadership of this department all the way through the nineties. And and believe me, we had a great police department. Now we don't. Now, now, because of the budget or the lack of revenues, the budget has like this, they say the twenty four positions that are allotted. However, I'm learning through talking with the officers that we may have seventeen positions in place with two of the positions, the sergeants off on workers comp. So that takes him down to maybe one to two patrol cars on this big city, this four square mile city. We have two police officers. We have liability issues. We have no backup for the officers. It's it's really a disgusting situation to have seen what this council has done towards its its police department. It's very, very devastating and it needs to be addressed.
And now we are here from Anthony Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So I would like to remind everybody to focus on the candidates' solutions that they have for these questions. Not saying what the problem is because we all know there's problems, but actually what they're proposing for solutions. And you guys take a look at the budget right now. The police department is over sixty percent of the budget. It's almost seventy percent of the budget. So it's not as though the city is not spending money on the police department. The issue is we don't have the money we need for a city our size. It's very simple. I'm highly analytical. I'm a numbers guy. We cannot have a quality police department if we do not grow the revenue of the city. So number one, we can talk all we want about wanting to put more police in and saying we should do better, but if we don't give them the resources they need, they're going to continue to to stay. This is basically what's happening. We have to give them the resources they need. You know, as was previously stated, that's right, we only have one community services officer. There's only two to three patrolmen at any given time. We should have about twenty nine officers. That's exactly right. We have got to give them the resources to do so. I would like to focus on community based policing. I would love to see our police officers ride around downtown on their bicycles and get to know the community rather than always being in their cars. But we don't have the resource to do that. We're actually not even doing traffic enforcement at the moment. We are at a low level of staffing. The good thing is our crime rates are pretty good. They're only a little bit worse than Vacaville. They're a lot better than Fairfield. So we're going to do what we can. We're going to grow revenue. We're going to give them the resources they need, but we have to have a plan to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the third question and the person that will begin is Mr. Hudson. And the question is, adequate, according housing, homelessness and food insecurity are critical areas of need for many. How will you address these concerns? Mr. Hudson.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first part of your question.
Okay, adequate, according housing, homelessness and food insecurity are critical areas of need for many. How will you address these concerns?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about homelessness and and housing and food security. These are really vital issues, especially with COVID going on and how difficult it is right now in in the market to get housing and to rent rent a place even in Sisoon City. It's expensive and it's beyond a lot of people's budget, especially considering that many people are not working because of the COVID. I've worked for many, many years in homeless and with low income and with seniors and disabled. I ran a food bank out of Community Action North Bay and in other places. The the problem is a crunch between people and and income. And it's also a part of the community and the lack of of good housing. That doesn't mean that Sisoon City needs to, we have a ton of housing in Sisoon City. Most of it should be considered affordable housing, but it's not. The problem is 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 we just don't have housing coming up. Our housing is determined by HUD, our vouchers that we get for section eight or come from HUD and we can lobby for more of those. They want us to build more housing, but we don't really have land to do that. Right now, we have about a hundred acres in the whole city that's available for development and that's that's slotted for various reasons. Not all land is good for affordable housing. On the homelessness, the city just made a horrible decision for sixty four thousand dollars for housing two people overnight at Shelter Salano.
Mr. Hudson, I I'm sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you.
My apologies.
All right, the next person is Thomas Alder.
It's me again. Jolly good to be here.
Do I need to read the reread the question for you or do you have?
No, no, I have it. We're talking about adequate housing and homelessness and the lack of low cost housing, et cetera. And this has been an issue for some years and like Mr. Hudson pointed out, if you'll drive around Sisoon, you'll see that a vast majority of the homes in Sisoon are low cost housing. And I know that we need additional housing for people out there that are people without homes, not not homeless. We need to be compassionate. We need to be understanding towards them. I know that there are rent problems. You know, I know that COVID nineteen has created problems. We have, I think, twenty nine homeless people on our streets. And yeah, we have to look to solutions. And like I just learned that the city is paying like sixty thousand dollars for two beds for the homeless. And that's that's the contribution they're making and we could do a lot better than that. We can get, we can get people, the community involved in helping get this the encampments and stuff squared away. I not only worked in law enforcement, I worked in as a doctor in psychology in the mental health. I worked at the crisis center. I counsel the homeless people on a voluntary basis to help them and I'm readily available as a pastor to to help them in any way and to help my city and to plan for the for these problems.
Thank you, Mr. Alder. Next person is Anthony Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So homelessness and housing is not a Sisoon City issue. It's not a Bay Area issue. This is a humanity issue. Homelessness has existed in the time of the Spartans and the Athenians and every single society in the history of humanity has had homelessness issues. So it's not something that we're going to solve. It's something that we have to manage and it's something that we can't do on our own. This is something we have to be very clear about. We are not going to solve it. But we have to make sure that we partner with the people who have the resources that want to address the issue. So there are Shelter Salano, there's Cap Salano, there are the resources out there in the state. What they want to see is that the city wants to be a good partner. So what is the city going to do to help address this? Are we just going to say someone else needs to do it? Or are we actually going to put something forward? Are we going to maybe propose a sanctioned encampment? Right now, we have twenty nine people living in Sisoon City. They're starting fires every other week. They're trashing our waterways. Wouldn't it be nice if we could put them in a verified, safe, validated encampment area that has toilet, that has trash, that has a place they can cook and they don't start fires? That's something I would like to do. We can't do it on our own. We have to make sure the county and other cities agree. We can't be the only step in the county. We have to make sure that we're part of a comprehensive program. What I want to be a part of is a solution. I want to be a partner and I want to make sure we're doing something about it. I also want to do a homeless cleanup thing where we pay the homeless to help clean up their areas and clean up part of town and you city for that, actually give them a little bit of work as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you so much. This is definitely an important issue and there's a couple of things that we need to make sure we're addressing, which is we do not have a system and.
Ms. Hernandez.
Okay. No worries. We do not have a system or programs currently in place that are that are even addressing this issue on a regular basis. And so I think we need to start there just to identify what we need to do and to bring bring resources forth. Like I mentioned previously, we do not have any type of nonprofit, for example, that is seeking grants specifically to bring money to address only the homelessness issue or unsheltered issue. And that's an important piece that we need to start with. We do not have in Sisoon City our own sheltering facilities. And that's another area that we need to identify. Is this an area that we want to we want to be able to develop here locally as well? And we do need stronger partnerships with other cities and our surrounding communities because we need to be able to leverage resources with each other because at the end of the day, that what we're trying to do is help the individual who is homeless get to a shelter as soon as we can and we do not have enough preventative services. The many of the individuals who are living on our streets are Sisoon City residents that lost their home in Sisoon City. And when they needed help, financial assistance, how to apply for a job or job placement assistance or being able to identify how to attain affordable housing when they don't have the resources or or personal structures to support them, our community is not able to provide them enough resources at this time. So strengthening those items is one of the things that we need to address and look at in a more comprehensive way with our surrounding community members as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Somehow my third question got out of sequence. So no, I'm not. I'm correct. I apologize. Okay, the next question and the person to have this question is Thomas Alder. And the question is, what is your vision?
Do you want me to read it, Sarah?
Okay, what is your vision for growth for Sisoon City? And how do you plan to improve the economic vitality of the city? In addition, what factors need to be considered?
Hello again. Yes, thank you for that question. My vision is to restore Sisoon City's financial integrity. That's a must. That's the number one. We can't do anything if we don't have money. We can't present programs and put programs in place without having a revenue to take care of it. That's that's vitally important. My vision is, like I say, to restore that that financial integrity. It's a must. We can't, we can't move ahead unless we've got funds in place to take care of the programs we want. We need to reach out. We need to, we need to plan to get monies in. We can do it through the federal government, the state government, private nonprofits and grants of all types. We need to do this and it has been done in the past. And it's just been over abundance of millions of dollars over the last two years that have put us in this pickle. So my visit, my concern is, like I say, the financial plus the public safety, especially the police, because we're in a devastating position with the police and they are demoralized. They are underpaid. We do not have sufficient units on the street to take care of our citizens and that concerns. And I want to get the city to move forward.
Alder, thank you.
Thank you, dear.
The next person is Anthony Adams.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Chapman. So my vision for Sisoon City is very clear. I want to make Sisoon City the destination for the next generation of businesses and families. Right now, Sisoon City does not have a variety of housing types. We have single family homes and we have some apartments. We don't have executive homes. We don't have townhomes. We don't have kind of starter homes for families. We don't have condos. What we do have is opportunity. We have a wonderful. What we do have is opportunity. We have a wonderful waterfront. And moreover, we have a train station that has been identified in the state rail plan, the twenty-four state rail plan, as the Salano County hub. Now, what that means, it's going to be the midway turnaround in between San Francisco and Sacramento, having fifteen-minute headways of high-speed rail trains. I want to say that again. Fifteen-minute headways of high-speed rail trains are going to be in Sassoon City by 2040. This is adopted in the state rail plan and Caltrans, moreover, that it's going to be their focus in the next ten to twenty years. This is going to bring tens of millions of dollars, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in investment into Sassoon City. So what we have to do is plan for this. We have to make sure we have good partnerships with the STA, with the state, with MTC, with Caltrans, with CalSTA. And we have to plan for success. We have to bring in a variety of housing types. We have to know that we're going to be a destination for the next generation of families, so have to have a high-quality businesses that are going to foster that. And I tell you what, I'm excited to see what the next ten, twenty years brings to Sassoon City because I think it's going to be exciting. And it's going to be a place that I and other people want to live in. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hudson, did you have an opportunity to answer the previous question?
Uh, I haven't asked, answered the question on my vision for growth, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay, I, I just want to, uh, make certain that I didn't miss you on the previous question. Thank you.
No, it's my turn. I should be the last one this time, so.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Just a minute. Um, a question was posed of me and now I, I have to back up to check. Yes, um, the next person to answer this one is Alma Hernandez.
What, what, uh?
I'll be back with, to you, Mr. Hudson.
All right, he hasn't had a chance.
I'm sorry, you were, I didn't understand.
Okay, I, I, I apologize. The question was asked of me was whether or not I had allowed you to answer the previous question. And it was, uh, based upon my paperwork, uh, you began, you, you began that round of questions. And that was on the, um, adequate affordable housing. Did you not answer that question?
I think that Mr. Hudson answered the affordable housing question and it's, now it's his opportunity to respond to what is your vision for growth? He should be the last.
Actually, actually, I think it's Alma's, uh, turn and then it's mine.
It is Alma's turn and then it's Mike's turn. So, uh, we were, we, the flow was correct.
Okay, got it, right.
I apologize to everyone for that.
No worries. And, you know, we just.
That we don't omit anyone the opportunity to answer or respond to a question. So forgive me, forgive us. All right, we will move on. And Alma Hernandez, it is your turn. And the question, do, uh, do you remember the question?
It was around my vision for, uh, economic growth.
Yes.
Okay. And, and thank you for taking the time just to resettle us real quick. That's good, you know, it's, uh, that's how we communicate, make sure we're on the same page and then we move forward. So, thank you. It's going to wait. Do you want me to wait for the time?
No, you go ahead.
I'll go. Okay, perfect. All right. Um, yes, so for me specifically, um, it's retail, um, residential and industrial development is what's going to help us move forward financially in our, in, in our community and grow. Um, I've mentioned this to some of my friends. I say, you know, I, for Sassoon City, you can arrive to Sassoon City by boat, by train, by busing here, by taking a, uh, you know, by cycling here, by walking here, driving here. And we should be a place where we have unique, um, shops and unique places to walk throughout the waterfront and everything that we have to offer where people want to come here to enjoy their weekends or enjoy their afternoons. And I can see it. I know that, that this is what we need to become and can become. Um, I believe that we need mixed housing because we have different types of revenue streams that we can attain because of the tax structure associated with housing. It's important to acknowledge. We do not have enough high-income housing either. So we do not have those tax revenues that some of our neighboring cities have. And so we do not have any developed, not enough developed here. Um, and, and just as much as we want to, uh, address the affordable housing issue. We also don't have enough, um, in, industrial jobs here. So it's kind of one of the things that we need to do is look for opportunities of what do we bring in the types of businesses and development we bring that we can actually leverage not only our local talent by ju, creating jobs locally, but also like increasing our revenue streams here. And one of the things that I bring because I, I, I work with business is relationships at state level. So we can bring conversations, put Sassoon City on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Hudson, we get an opportunity to answer this question. And the timer is ready. Yes, begin.
Okay, great. My vision for Sassoon City, it's simple. My vision is to restore the financial integrity of the city. We can't have business growth. We can't have housing growth. We can't have, uh, improvements in parks and recreation if we don't have a balanced budget. A balanced budget pays the whole thing. All right? Nobody's going to miss, bring their business to a rundown city that can't fix its streets or won't patrol the crime in the neighborhoods. Nobody's going to want to move here. Property values are going to plummet. We have problems. And the only way we can solve it is having a, uh, a strong financial position where we're fixing our streets. We're patrolling our streets with PV. We're taking care of the homeless. We're taking care of the trash problems. We're taking care of the other problems that we have in the city. We cannot, the current council is, has spent us into a hole that we are going to have to struggle to get out of. And until we get out of that hole, businesses aren't going to want to come here. People aren't going to want to move to a city that's rundown and can't fix its streets or, or it's unsafe. We have to face reality. Without a balanced budget, we're not going to get anywhere growth-wise. So that's the first priority. We're going to recruit. We're going to work hard and develop as much business as possible to help that situation. But until we can fix that budget, it isn't happening. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the next question. And the person to begin is Anthony Adams. Due to the pandemic, many businesses have been adversely affected. What ideas do you have to help the business community recover?
Well, again, this is a Sassoon City issue and we do have to learn from others on this one. I personally don't like the way that the state handled COVID at all. Um, I don't like the way the feds handled COVID. I think if you're going to require a business to shut down, then they should not have to pay any rent. I think if you are going to require a business to close down, that they shouldn't have to pay their loans. I don't know why the federal government didn't just freeze all loan and rent payments for the time that they required the businesses to shut down. And the state should have done the same. So right now we have business owners that are calling me up and asking if there's help. Well, a lot of these grants and things that they have have a lot of strings attached. You have to keep some employees. You have to pay them a certain amount. And you end up, um, going into the hole just to make sure you're trying to, uh, as you're trying to dig your way out of it. It's not an easy solution, to be perfectly honest. I mean, probably the best thing that we have to do is come together as a people and try to attack the virus to make sure that we don't get the number so high that the state asks us to close down. If we had the resources, what I would like to do is there's something very similar to what Fairfield did. Fairfield offered rent relief for small businesses that had under, I think it was twenty employees. If you needed some rent relief for a month or two of your rent, the city would pay it. That's how we're going to save our businesses. The, the gyms and the restaurants and the people that can't pay their rent, what are they going to do? I, I don't know the answer to it. I wish the feds and the states would have helped solve that issue. But if we had the resources of the city, that's how I would do it. I would, um, I would honestly just pay the rent for a month or two and open goodbye. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person, Ms. Hernandez.
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. Due to the pandemic, many businesses have been adversely affected. What ideas do you have to help the business community recover?
I think one of the things, um, we, we just have a, um, a new board of leadership for the, um, Business Improvement District in downtown Sassoon that has been sorely needed because it, it, it was lacking, um, some leadership in the past. And so, and, and that's what I keep hearing from our small business owners. And so now we're seeing that we have a, um, new planning program in place that is bringing forth cleaning our streets in downtown Sassoon to keep the, to beautify it. We just have a new, uh, barbecue spot that opened up in Sassoon. We have two new businesses that just opened in the Marina Center. One new business coming in, in Sassoon, um, in the winter that's coming up for, that's, I just spoke to the owner yesterday. There is potential in Sassoon City to support our businesses when they know that members in the community care to support them in however we can. So that is connecting them with resources that are financial resources, um, both state and local programs. The CARES Act provided money and funding that I was able to advocate for Sassoon City to help be prioritized. And, and currently working with our, our small business owners to rethink about the current business model. So restaurants went from not knowing what to do to now delivering services, up, upgrading their internal systems to showcase what they're doing and reach more customers and being able to have people drive by and, and pick up orders. And we have to continue to be innovative about how we're going to support our, our small businesses at this time. We can't wait for funding to come. We have to help them right now and bring people to them to help them survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hudson, Miss Hernandez, you're next.
This is about the pandemic, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Sassoon City, I think it would be great if Sassoon City could help business owners with a month of rent here and there. But we're broke. We, we're not helping anybody. We, uh, we don't have money to give to businesses to help them out. Um, we need to be, have a strong city with reserves. If we had reserves, if we had a good position, I think that that would give us a, a big leg up on helping our businesses. But as it is, our city actually shut down viable businesses on the complaints of competitors. It was a horrible situation. Our city shut down one business because another business complained about its COVID response. That was not cool. Um, we had other problems. If we had a police department that was fully staffed, we could have our police officers help our businesses develop, uh, solid COVID management plans and go through. They're supposed to have a plan on every business right now. Well, our, our PD could have helped with that. Uh, but they didn't because we don't have enough people. We have problems and we need to address them at the root cause. We need to stop spending one, uh, one-time monies on ongoing expenses. We need to stop deficit financing our city. Thank you.
You nailed it.
Mr. Alder.
Uh, hello again. Yeah, this has been a, uh, COVID-19 that's been very tragic, drastic for the whole world. Uh, especially for the United States and, and state and local. And we've had to depend on, on everyone at the federal, at the state, uh, the county and, and at the local levels to, uh, put input and, and regulate what is happening with COVID-19 and how we can open up these businesses, which we need to do. We need to come together as a community. Need, we need to work together like with the, the county, uh, health department, like with the state health department. Um, but we all need, uh, we all need to be state holders, which we are. And we all need to, um, have input into what is happening. Um, now, like Mr. Hudson said, we are broke. We, we have no reserves. We, we can't offer anything to any extreme, right, to help our, our community out. Um, and our businesses out. Um, like I said, we have the CARES Act, um, which has been a very slow process. But COVID-19 is not going away. And we have to be prepared for it. And we have to have a county that's going to be, um, a county council, or I should say a city council that is going to, uh, have to be together and be assertive and, um, and have much input into what's happening within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hernandez, we will begin the next question with you. What action will you take to bring diverse communities such as socio-economically, culturally, racially, and politically? What would you do to bring them together to create greater cohesiveness and inclu, and inclusivity?
Well, this is a, a question close to my heart. As, uh, a member of the diverse community, both being a female and being Hispanic, it's one of the things that I, I work towards, being able to, um, bring forth the voice about being intentional around including people. Um, uh, one of my favorite quotes is, "If you do not intentionally include, you unintentionally exclude." And that means that we need to not only look at the, the items that you address, but one of them is special needs. That's another area that I, I feel really important is to be included. So, um, in both in diversity of mobility, diversity of language, um, being able to provide services in a variety of languages, especially around emergency response. Um, and all of those things are, are, are important. I think for me, visibility, people need to see themselves in our community. People need to be invited to be part of committees. People need to be invited to participate and lead in various ways and to celebrate culture and to celebrate the differences between us and among us so that we can understand each other better and we can see each other and value each other for who we are as a community. That is how you bring people together. Then when we have these big goals and big challenges as a community we need to face, then you can include their voices and include the diverse issues that they have and need and you ensure that they're being addressed. So some members sometimes don't feel that they have access to our city council, um, hall, actually. And, and being able to invite them, I was inviting people like, here's a link, zoom in, stop by. This is how you actually make public comment, educating our community of, yes, we want your voice. Yes, we want you to be seen and included and we're inviting you in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Hudson, you're next.
Uh, can you read the question again, please?
Yes. What actions will you take to bring diverse communities such as those, uh, socio-economically, culturally, racially, and politically together to create greater cohesiveness and inclusivity?
What a great question. Uh, Sassoon City currently is the third most diverse community in America. That's huge. That's a, that's a big score for Sassoon City. Uh, Vallejo happens to be the number one, by the way, in the nation, uh, most of diverse communities. So I think that our community makeup, uh, at least from a racial point of view, is, uh, pretty on spot. Uh, what we really need to improve on is, is getting a wide variety of, of economic, uh, uh, stances in our city. Right now we have, uh, we're, we're pretty much a very homogeneous environment, if you want to know what I mean. The, when it comes to economic development and things like that, we don't have a ton of high earners in this city. We do have a, a, a large number of apartment people. We have a lot of people that are homeowners, single-family homeowners. Uh, but we, we completely lack, uh, for the most part, a high-end, which is kind of troubling because that means we're a little bit unbalanced. Um, I think that, um, hiring practices, uh, need to be based on, uh, getting the best person for the job always. Number one. Secondly, uh, I think that, that anytime you, uh, have to fill a position with a family member, that's wrong. And third, I think that, that, you know, when you have a, a quota system or something like that, that you're going to disenfranchise somebody. And I think we have to be very careful of that.
Thank you. The next person, Mr. Alder.
Thanks again. And, uh, diversity, that, that's been around for a long, long time. And I've been involved in that for sixty-plus years in, in my way of life. And I believe that all, all people are, are created equal. And we have to treat them with love. We have to treat them with respect. And we have to involve each and every, um, group, minority into the, the whole process because we, we, we all have red blood. There's, there's no doubt. Um, I would, I, I've been involved in, in economic, um, and, uh, diverse-type, uh, meetings and, and programs, uh, for many, many years. And all I say is I love my fellow man. Getting onto the hiring practices, I, I totally agree that, that we have to get all minorities. Getting onto the hiring practices, I I totally agree that that we have to get all minorities into all jobs equally. And third, Mr. Hudson was right on when he said that Sussun City is the third in the the nation as far as diversity is concerned. So I think we're we're doing a pretty good job, but we've got a we've got a ways to go because we have to be open. We have to be honest. We have to listen to others. And we have to involve everyone.
Thank you.
You.
And Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So a lot of really good facts have been stated already. Mr. Hudson Alder stated, we are the third most diverse city in the entire nation. And Mr. Hudson is right, we don't have economic diversity, which we sorely need. And also, we do need staffing that reflects our community as well. Right now, we actually do have a fire department that one hundred percent reflects our community and the racial makeup of our community. That's not yet the case with our police departments, which is something we do need to work towards. But as far as the, you know, having the diversity as far as economics, there's always to get to this, right? So there's actually something called an inclusionary housing ordinance, which would say, say you have a development coming in of a hundred units, it would state that you need, let's say, ten percent of those units to be affordable. What that does is it mixes income groups. You don't have just people of high income or just people of low income. You have a mix. You have grandmas, you have new uh new families, you have successful business people all in the same area. So you have a mix, not only racial makeup, but also socioeconomic makeup as well. And to add on to that, I don't want concentration of poverty either, to be honest. I don't want one hundred percent above market rate housing, and I don't want one hundred percent below market rate housing either. I think that we should have a mix in every housing development that we have of market rate and affordable units, which is going to help something not only socioeconomic but racially and just to make sure everyone's involved. I also really like what Mr. Hernandez said about having different groups that we invite people to. Her and I are part of two different groups that the city puts on, and it is very racially and socioeconomically diverse. So that's what we're involved. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, Mr. Hudson, you will begin the next question round. And that is, the question is, what ideas do you have for enhancing the development of the Marina area?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Great. So development of the Marina, originally, the Marina area down at the waterfront was slated to have about two hundred more slips. And there's actually a capacity for doing those slips. And they actually make money for the city. That's something that we could do. I'm the guy who brought in the cleanup services right now down at the waterfront. I have a, I formed a partnership with Slano Diversified Services. And these are are people that are have some developmental disabilities, and they come down and they're able to earn a wage by helping us. So it's very mutually beneficial. It's affordable for the the Business Improvement District. I'm very proud of doing that. But we need to work harder at boarded up businesses. Right now, the city is the number one slumlord for the downtown area in the Marina. We need to get rid of some of those buildings that are boarded up. We need to kind of clear the site so we can get new businesses down here. Of course, if we don't have any money, it's going to be really tough to to do that. We're in a deficit, and that's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alder. Hold on just a minute. Hold on just a minute.
I'm holding.
Okay, I'm ready. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Alder, you have it.
Okay, well, like I say, I've been around Sussun for a long time. I've been involved in leadership. I've been involved in planning. And I was involved with a specific plan on how Sussun was going to grow for the next decade, twenty years, the next thirty years. I was one of the responsible parties for building the civic center and planning that. And that included the Marina area. And I lost, I've seen a lot of big changes because of our planning process. And I've seen all companies moved out. And I've seen the waterway and the Marina brought to a beautiful point where it's fantastic for people to come to bring their families to, and, you know, we we need to get some activity going down there like canoeing or whatever it might be in the way of activity to bring in revenues. It needs to be cleaned up. And Mr. Hudson suggested that, you know, we had two hundred more slips available. We need to to look at that. And we need, we need to be innovative. We need to get out there and get ideas on what would be best for our city. Our city is a hundred and fifty years old. And it's it's, you know, based on on waterway.
Thank you, Mr. Alder.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Adams.
This seems like it'd be a very difficult question, but again, we just have to learn from those around us. Think of the nicest downtowns that are by waterfronts that you've been to. Venetia, Tiburon, even Austin, San Antonio. What do all these have in common? What are all those downtowns on waterfronts? What do they all have? Well, they all have really nice businesses and really nice housing by the water. So we have some businesses down by the water, and we have some houses down by the water. So actually, those houses that are down by the water, that are down by the boat launch, one of them was just recently listed. You guys guess how much that house would go for downtown Sussun City? It's one point three million dollars. That is substantial property tax revenue that the city is going to be getting. And if somebody's able to afford that house, that means they have disposable income they could now use downtown. So again, think of downtown Napa, Tiburon, the nice places that have downtowns. What are we missing in downtown Sussun? We don't have high-quality housing in our downtown. It's almost a chicken or the egg thing, right? What's going to come first, is a high-quality businesses or high-quality housing? Well, you have to have a mix of both, but a business is not going to go down and spend money unless they have people with money who live at that location. So we have a great waterfront. We have a train station that connects to San Francisco and Sacramento, where all the jobs and the money are. If we can build high-quality housing near a train station, near a waterfront, we are going to have fantastic businesses come in that are fun and exciting and bringing people to the downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you so much. And I did see that listing of that home. And it made me realize we do have potential here to create more revenue too as well in that aspect. And but to be truthful, there is areas and pockets of housing in in that area that are high poverty. And so we need to be able to address those issues too and those concerns in order to make it it's stronger economically as well. I really think that we have here a great opportunity to market and promote ourselves if we are very strategic about it, right? And we have very unique businesses that I I get asked, so what is there to do downtown or by the Marina? And we need more programs, we have kayaking, we have unique businesses. And that is not being promoted enough or marketed enough that beyond Sussun. We have surrounding areas that could come here and just take the train and come on over and have a good meal. You know, find some fine dining that we have in downtown Sussun in Marina area as well. But I think that one of the things that is important to look for is continuing to make sure that it stays clean, that we have crime prevention and strategies around that, that businesses feel safe and we are inviting continuously. That we have people that can be interested in fixing some of those buildings and want to actually then develop there. And that we have programs and activities in place that families come in. We have a new hotel that's going up in that area. We can attract visitors here and then have something to do in the evenings to put money downtown. So there is a lot of potential and a lot of opportunity that I want us to see be moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Okay. The next person to begin. The person to begin with the next question, rather, is Mr. Alder. What is your understanding of the impact on Sussun City of water being diverted via the single tunnel plan to Southern California?
Well, my opinion, in my approach, would be to stop that or to reduce it significantly because if if they're hooking up our water, you know, in the delta, the waterways and our slews, and they're running it down to LA, hey, how long will it be before we're dried up? So we have to give that significant thought and take significant action through the state and all of the the agencies involved for that not to happen. That's, you know, taken from Peter to give to Paul, but that's eventually going to leave the northern and and central part of California in in a dry spot, in a drought. And and that should never happen. And I think we have to to push forth with the the city government, the federal or the state governments and, you know, get after, get after the the state government in ways of of telling them that, you know, they've got to look to the future of this part of the country too. And that would be my response to that. We we need to take action. And we need to take serious affirmative action for that not to happen and to take away water from our kids in the in the next decade or less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alder. Mr. Adams.
Thank you. So this is a very large question with, it's like so complicated. It's hard to really understand what the the benefits and costs are here. So I think it's really important to take a step back and try to understand what this water tunnel actually does and who it hurts and who it benefits, right? So Sussun City, we don't get our water from the delta. We don't get our water from the Sacramento River. We get our water from Lake Bariessa. So our water source is not affected by this tunnel, so let's be clear here. What the tunnel does, it takes water and instead of bringing it through the 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 canal that currently goes all the way down, it brings it through a tunnel. So it shortchanges the distance and it is supposed to save water from being evaporated. So in the end, I think it's supposed to be better for water overall for the state. And I'm not an expert in this, and I tend to defer to people who do this as a living and read their analysis of it. From what I've read, it would not have a significant impact on our area here. It could have it on some people who use the Sacramento River water for the irrigation of their crops. So that could be some people out maybe east Solano County or Yolo County or San Joaquin. But it doesn't affect us here in Sussun City directly. So I want to be clear about that. I don't know if I support it or not. I I actually need to read a whole lot more about it if it was something I was going to personally vote on. But it's not something I've put a lot of time into because, again, it doesn't affect our residents. And I want to focus on a problems and solutions that affect us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Hernandez, same question.
Thank you so much. I think I also agree that this is a broader question because it also talks about the interconnectedness around state, right? And state initiatives and and things around what it was affecting a different region and what is the resources or or projects that might affect us along the way. So I also believe that we need to have a clear understanding of what the implications are of this to our local community, if at all. And also what it means, both pros and cons of what its project and initiative is in regards to the water, right? I I used to consult school districts in the state of California and I was in the Central Valley very, very often. And I was there during the high drought years and the Dust Bowl. So I understand when there when there are different entities in in our state that are looking for resources of how do you get water from A to B. So this is something that I would be very interested in learning more about in regards to the stakeholders, the cost, how it affects us, how our community is going to be educated on what this means. Is there going to be public input, if at all? And I think that that is what I want to mention right now is whenever we have a project, that it should be part of our approach. What does it mean to our community? And how does it affect us? Is there a cost to us? And as long as we bring these questions forward at any project, whether this or anything else in the future, I think it'll just continue to help us make sure that we're making the correct decisions that are sustainable for us in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Hudson.
What a great question. This is a statewide question, but basically what's happening is Southern California is stealing our water to grow their population. And this is not a good thing. What it's doing is it's causing, first of all, saltwater intrusion into the Sacramento River Delta area. That's bad. And what that means is a lot of farmland is not going to be usable. We have the richest farmland in the country, right here on the delta. It also means that there'll be more pressure on Lake Bariessa water resources that we currently get our water from. Eighty percent of Lake Bariessa goes to Sussun City. And this is an important thing because this is one of the cleanest sources of water around. That's why we have Budweiser here, that's why we have Jelly Belly here, that's why we have this economic development in in food manufacturing, because we have great water. To have more pressure on Bariessa is going to drive up water rates, and it's going to limit our growth. And it's also going to limit our resources. It's going to ruin our water. It's going to cause problems. Right now, we have a great salmon run that goes through Sussun City. Well, if we get rid of the, if we allow saltwater to intrude up into the delta, you're not going to get the same kind of fish. You're going to kill a whole ecosystem. It's a problem. We need to understand this, and we need to advocate for limiting the amount of water Southern California steals from Northern California. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is again. Mr. Alder. And this will be our final question. And that is, what is the city's current fiscal standing? And how do you perceive or what would you do or suggest to improve it?
Well, thanks again. And I'm glad it's our last question. It's a big one. The 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 physical of the financial state of Sussun at this point in time is very, very it's something that we have to take very seriously. Every every citizen out there should know this. It's it's not that we have money. We don't have money. We had money two years ago. We had a reserve. But it seems like the current council, it's just taken the Visa card and just went all out and purchased what they wanted to purchase without revenues in place. And we we need to find ways of bringing revenue in through the federal, through the state, through the county, through private entity. And we need to get together as a community to figure some of this out. We need, we need to do that through, particularly through the council and have the council get input from the people before they start. Like the council started a major project with the fire department and turning it from volunteer to to total full full time, which costs millions of dollars, which we didn't have the revenue for. And I understand the need for a fire department, but I understand that it should have been done in in a planned way, not just a one-time thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alder. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So I want to be clear about what the state of the budget is. We are about one million dollars short on a recurring basis, right? It was a lot larger. We've had some more revenue than we thought recently, and also we have custom expenses. So, you know, how did we get into this place? It's not as though we just showed up in the year 2018 and life just existed, right? So we've come to this point because of things that came before us. So when I got on the council, we had not changed our fire panels in any of our buildings. We didn't have a fire inspector at all. We hadn't done fire inspections since the nineteen nineties. There are things that we were supposed to pay for the state that hadn't been risen since 2011. We didn't do the the index inflator. So where do you think somebody's going to get paid for? It's like we got this car that didn't have this maintenance done. And then we had to do all this maintenance or the car was going to fall apart. Yeah, it's going to cost a little bit in order to make sure that the car is working adequately. That's where we're at right now. I don't like that we're at this point, but we are. What has been happening in the last two years, we're about to open up a hotel. We have two new businesses right by the post office that are about to break ground right now. We have eighty-eight market rate units that just got approved recently. We sold two city properties for over a million dollars. We approved one cannabis business that's going to get us about five hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. And another one we're going to approve next month that's going to get us about a quarter million dollars more in revenue. So what are we going to do? We're going to plan for success. We have open lots. We have plans for all of them. We've gotten more development applications in the past two years than we've gotten in the last ten years. We're going to grow our way out of this, and we're going to be successful going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you so much. In this journey, one of the things that was really important for me was to try and understand how do we get here. And in conversations with our city manager, he points to other projects such as redevelopment. And in conversations with our city manager, he points to other projects such as redevelopment money being taken away in 2012, not enough development funding at that time, or structures, or bringing in revenue sources. And, and that's just the nature of how it happened, right? As, as, as an indicator. The other piece was he says, we just do not have enough revenue in, in business development here. And so that's another area that we need to look at. So one of the things that I think is really important to address in regards to what we're doing here is not only to fix our structural bus, but the budget. One of my concerns is one-time funding that are being used at this time to just get us through this year. In the most recent report from our city manager, he's referencing 2022 and 2023 as years to be affected because our current, uh, structures at this time. So we're really looking at what are we going to do for the next five years to ensure we do not have, um, structural deficits at that time? And it is bringing in revenue, marketing ourselves, looking at different ways to get grant money in things. How do we leverage our current structures, our current buildings that, that are sitting empty to get people to come in and put their businesses there? How do we continue to support our local residents so that they don't lose their homes? And we don't lose that opportunity to support them and, and have their, their, the revenue from those pieces in housing here as well. So it's a multifaceted answer. It's very complex and I look forward to, to putting it further.
Thank you. And Mr. Hudson.
I'm sorry, I, uh, I was dropped for the question. Can you repeat it?
Sure. What, what is the city's current fiscal standing? And what might you recommend to improve it?
Okay, great. So first of all, the city is $5 million in debt. And that's evidenced by the budget that was published, uh, the end of June, their official budget. Now, money comes in, money goes out, budgets are adjusted throughout the year. Right now they're consuming all of Measure S dollars to, to have less of a deficit, but they still have a deficit. It's not something to brag about, a million dollar deficit. You could say that maybe we had to do that maintenance on the cars. The state has unfunded mandates that fall on us all the time. Every day the state legislature thinks of some new wacky idea that they want to push to cities. If they don't fund it, it doesn't happen. And other previous councils were wise enough to know this. But right now, our current council, they believe everything the legislature says. Well, that, that's just not the right way to think. So the deficit's there. We need to stop spending one-time money on ongoing expenses. Secondly, we have to develop businesses. And the only way you're going to develop businesses is have a balanced budget. We need to develop our housing. The only way you're going to develop housing is have a balanced budget. We need a safer neighborhood. How are you going to do that? Have a balanced budget. It's simple. All right? Don't spend one-time monies on ongoing expenses. Thank you.
That was your final question, and I would like to share that we had a question to come in from the audience, which was almost identical to the final question. So with that said, we are now going to have your closing statements. And we will begin, and you will have two minutes for your closing statement. And we ask that at the conclusion of your final state, of your closing statement, please share with the audience your contact information in the regard, in, in in the event that they may have additional questions that, that they want to ask. And any question that may come in, all of your responses will be, um, placed on the League's, um, Facebook page. Okay, all right. So to begin the final, um, segment of the forum, we will have Mr. Mike Hudson. You have two minutes to provide your closing statements and to conclude with your, uh, contact information.
First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters of Solano County. They've done an outstanding job with this forum. I appreciate the questions and I appreciate the dedication of the volunteers. Sussun City has the ability to be a great place to live, to raise a family, to grow. We have the ability to produce, uh, uh, we have four terrific schools. We have a great waterfront. We have wonderful businesses. And we have a spirit in our city of volunteerism, of, of rolling up our sleeves and getting things done. I think we need to enable that volunteerism. We need to, we need to see nonprofits prosper. We need to see profitable businesses prosper. We need to make sure that we're taking care of our bills and our businesses. But more important, we need to celebrate our residents. Our residents are where it's at and they're what it's, uh, all about. Making their lives better, having a higher quality of life, having, uh, streets that are well paved and, and low crime rates. I think it's vital. My contact information is Mike Hudson at Hudson Business, excuse me, at, uh, Mike Hudson 2020.com. And you can always reach me at 707-372-8389. I'm happy to take questions and talk to anybody. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I hope everyone has a, just a wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Okay, Ms. Hernandez, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you so much. I truly enjoyed this opportunity to connect with community and, um, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for providing this platform because I think it's so important. Community engagement is a priority for me and I really, really think that when community just knows who their elected officials are and how they are approachable and how they can ask questions and that we make ourselves available. It is a key component to a successful community engagement piece that is important to me. Once again, I, one of the things that I, I just want to emphasize is how much I care about our community. I bring a diverse background in business and I work with many small business organizations. I bring a background of volunteerism and, and supporting our nonprofit organizations. I belong to many committees who are currently fundraising, I mean, in middle of fundraisers right now to what, fundraise Wi-Fi hotspots for children, to fundraise for money, um, to feed homeless and to fundraise for issues that are, are, are social issues that we're all feeling right now that I think are at the forefront of our minds and hearts. And I think that, that, that's what I'm ready for is to bring that level of commitment, dedication to work ethic and wanting to commit to community and what their priorities are and needs to the forefront and ensuring that, um, I'm able to do that to the best of my ability. For anyone who wants to connect with me, uh, feel free. I invite you to, um, my email address is Alma, A-L-M-A, the number four, susun@gmail.com. That's AlmaForSussun@gmail.com. And my phone number is 707-681-5924. I do my best to be as transparent as I can. So you can follow my social media at AlmaForSussun. That's the handle for Facebook and, and Instagram, for example. Join me there so you can follow along on this journey too. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Dr. Chapman, members of the League of Women Voters, uh, thank you fellow candidates as well, and again, members of the public who took the time to listen to this. I'm a visionary leader. I have the experience, education and enthusiasm to move Sussun City into the 21st century. I haven't been in Sussun City for that long. I've only been here seven years. But I did realize when I got here that Sussun City was not developing in, at the same rate as other cities. You look at Venetia since 2008, Dixon, Rio Vista, all those cities grew substantially. They all improved substantially and are in better places. Sussun City got a landmark. We need the leaders that can plan for the future, that can bring a diverse availability of housing and job opportunities to the city and plan for the 21st century. So I don't only want to say what I want to do. I'm going to say what I have done in the past two years that I've been on council. In the past two years on council, we've hired the city's first finance director. We did not have a finance director for our city, which is one of the reasons why we were in such bad fiscal shape. We hired four new firefighters and a new fire inspector. We have our first strategic plan for the city. We expanded after school and summer school programs. We started the climate and environment committee to address sea level rise in our city and some of the, um, the trash issues that we had. Ms. Hernandez is on that as well. We have a public safety committee. We have approved 88 units of high-quality multifamily housing. We contracted to develop the parcel rights to the, the post office. We sold that land and we're going to have, uh, two very high-quality developments happening very soon. And we got some grants to upgrade our city, um, software as well, our permitting software, and also, um, to plan around the train station at 30 acre site. So for my contact information, uh, you can go to my website. It's AdamsForSussun.com. That is AdamsForSussun.com. And also my phone number is 925-788-0758. My phone number is 788-0758. Anthony Adams, I very much appreciate your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And last but not least, Mr. Alder.
Wow, the older guy. Okay, thank you ladies and thank you for the League of, of ladies for putting on this forum. You've done a very, very excellent job. I believe that you have gotten information out to the general public, the citizens of Sussun City, that they needed to know. They needed to hear each and every one of us. And I appreciate each and every one of us for putting forth effort, our time, uh, our finances in, into wanting to be with our city, to help our city, to help our city in leadership, in planning, in progression, in, in bringing in the, the necessary revenues for people to have a great quality of life. I'm, I'm not a politician. I'm, I'm a person who loves my city, who cares for my city, cares for what's happening in the city. I, I have no, excuse me very much. I, I have no ego. I have, have no power trip. I have no finances that I'm wanting from the city. I want to give my life. Sussun City has been great to me and I want to give back to the citizens of Sussun because they are great people. I watched this town grow. I've been involved heavily in, in what has happened in my city. And I want to continue, uh, to be involved heavily and, and there's so much happening. I, I have so much training, um, education, leadership. I have many degrees. But that, you know, realistically and logically, um, those can help me, but I'm a human being. I love people. I love my community and I want that quality of life for our, our people now and for our kids to come in the future. And believe me, there's, there's a lot of specifics that need to, uh, get resolved within the city. But it can happen and, and we will, we will move forward. Thank you very much and God bless you all.
Mr. Alder, would you like to provide your contact information?
Oh, absolutely. My name is Tom Alder. And my telephone number is 707-639-0055. And you can contact me at T Alder 2 F B C Global dot net. And I welcome, I welcome any telephone, any communication. I'm available. And I love communicating with the people. I, I want to help them with their needs. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, um, I would like to extend my appreciation and thanks to the, um, candidates and also I believe the coordinator may have some closing remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and thank you candidates. Uh, it was a very informative, um, session. Uh, I think like some of the candidates said, uh, to be seen and heard is very impactful to the constituents to be able to put a, a, a name to a face and ideas are, um, goals that they foresee that it's coming for Sussun or impacting Sussun was a very informative, uh, session. So thank you very much. Thank you to staff, the timekeeper, the mod, the moderator, uh, the chat manager and, um, our administrator. And saying that, administrator, please turn on your, um, your, um, your video as well as your, um, your, your video and say something, please. Take me out of this.
I'm back. That's what I'll say.
Thank you.
All right, this is great. Uh, and I will now stop the, uh, live stream. I, I want, I would, did want to thank actually Mr. Hudson for continuing to check back in. It was a challenge getting, keeping the audio alive.
Anyway, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all of you.
Yes.
Okay, so that's it for.